I will call the meeting to order bang bang with the gavel. Welcome everyone to the neighborhood board number twelve meeting. It is Tuesday, September sixteenth at seven P M. And I just for iteration for everyone, I would like to review the rules of speaking. So if you want to speak, please raise your hand or just say hey. That you would like to speak since we're doing it virtually as well. And um. I'll read off as we as we enter the sections, I'll read off the number of minutes everyone has to speak and well, let's start with item number two. City monthly reports, starting with the Honolulu Fire Department. These speakers are limited to three minutes each. Honolulu Fire Department. Nope, okay, I know they submitted a report and it's on our Google Drive. So if they end up not being here, please members take a look at it if you have any questions. We can save it for the next one. Alright, since no one's here from Honolulu Fire Department, I will start with the Honolulu Police Department District One. Do we have a representative? Please identify yourself. Is that Sergeant Brian Sekia? No.
Can can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, yes, we can.
You guys can hear, okay, sorry, my computer is kind of funny, but. Yes, hi, my name Sergeant Brian Sekia, I work out of District One, I worked a night shift in the area of. Punch Buonuano, I'll be reading off the stats for the month of August, I'll start off with. Motor vehicle theft type cases, previously we had. Uh, seven reported cases and in August, we only had three. Burglary type cases, previously we had five. And now we have, sorry, in the month of August, reported was two. Theft type cases, previously the month before was six, in August, we had two. Motor, what we call U E M V, which is basically. Vehicle break-ins, previously we had three and in the month of August, we had zero, so that's good. Assault type cases, previously we had two re- two reported cases. The month of August had an uptick, we had six reported assault type cases. Uh, sex assault type cases, previously we had zero, in the month of August, we had zero. Graffiti type cases, previously zero, August, zero. And drug type cases, previously zero, and the month of August, zero as well. Motor vehicle collision type of incidences, the prior month, we had fifteen. The month of August, we saw twenty-five, so we saw uptick in motor vehicle collision type incidences. For the month of August, total calls for service, we had. Five hundred thirty-two calls for service, previously we had five hundred fifty-nine, so a little bit of. Less calls for service in the month of August, but um, as you can see, we had more vehicle collisions as. Uh, our district and the department as well, we just want to remind the public to to drive with aloha, drive. Safely with patience. Um, you guys probably heard in the news that, you know, there's a lot more of traffic fatalities and more. Serious injuries and whatnot, so we're just asking the public to be more safe. And the department or as far as District One, we're also upticking our traffic enforcement as well, yes. And that that's all I have, is there any questions for District One?
Before, oh, you know what, I'm sorry, I made a faux pas, we forgot to take the roll call.
Oh, sorry.
My apologies, no, my apologies, um, neighborhood assistant Rachel? Are you there? Hi, I'm sorry, I was out of order.
Don't worry, so we have Melissa, the new N A D will be just training right now.
Okay, Sergeant, if you don't mind waiting a second, we did the roll call.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, let's start with Mason Ayona. And we got an email for Jill Eastley Allen, that she's off Ireland, so she's absent.
Here.
Present, thank you. Kathy Green.
Here.
Thank you. Audrey Hidono.
Here, present.
Thank you. Paula Corchige.
Yeah.
Thank you. Holana Lee. Thank you. Michael.
Present.
Present, thank you, Larry Smith.
Here.
Thank you, present. Patrick Smith.
Here.
Thank you. Philip Soon. Absent. Sylvia Yell.
Here.
Thank you very much, and that totals nine members present.
Can I ask question about, did you check for Philip Soon, isn't he, hasn't he? Resigned for his board seat due to moving to the mainland?
Yes, that is correct. She didn't need to mention Philip Soon, I think we established at the last meeting that he resigned.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you. So that means we need six for quorum?
No, we still need eight.
Yeah, so.
Because it gets based on the fifteen.
That is so weird, okay, thank you. Thank you so much for the roll call, we're gonna go back to. We're gonna jump back into order with District One from the Honolulu Police Department Sergeant Brian Sekia. Is asking the member, asking, should I go with the members first and then the audience? Members, do you have any questions for Sergeant Brian Sekia? Please say, hey, I do, yes, I do.
Hey, I do.
Okay, Paula, you are recognized, please go ahead.
Officer. Brian.
Yes. Yes, I.
I can take my my picture off and put you on. Um, I just want to ask how many tickets you folks have been giving? Because I heard that. It's increased and I'm wondering, when you go to court with these citations. How many of them are given? A little bit of a slap for speeding? Or are they just letting them go and our police officers are wasting their time at court?
Um, you know, I'm not sure what what the court, how the courts are judging cases. Um, I'm not sure, I can try find that out for the next time, I'm. I gotta, I'm not familiar on how I would do that, but I can try ask around and see if we can get like a. Some numbers on what cases are prosecuted, I mean, what cases were convictions or pleas? Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure about that right now, I can try and figure that out. For the next meeting, yeah. Sorry, I don't have that.
Yes, officer, that would be great to know because I want to know how much time our police. Especially my police, you're part of my police. Um, are wasting their time by giving out these citations when they're not getting slapped with something. Maybe they should do roadwork, where you can watch them. You know what I mean?
Yes, and you know, a lot has to do with how strong the the observations are or. If somebody plea- pleads guilty, sometimes they make deals and whatnot, so. Every every ca- every ticket, every case is different, really, every judge is different. Um, so.
So could you tell judges to please start cracking down? Like the crackerjack?
Yeah, that's above my pay.
The words, so they start.
Yeah.
Thank you, Paula, I think he's established, Sergeant established that the courts is a different jurisdiction, but it's a great question and he will ask and get back to you. Thank you.
Atlanta, make sure that they're not wasting their time.
Definitely.
If the courts aren't helping, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions from the members? If not, do we have anyone in present from the public that would like to ask any questions, please shout out? Yes, I do.
We have one.
Yes, we do. Go, please, please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Joseph Chu, I live at Thirty Five Country Club Road. And just want to address the Sergeant in regards to traffic safety on the Poly Highway. Uh, two weeks ago on September fifth, there was a major traffic accident on the Poly Highway involving. A head-on collision involving three vehicles. One car was heading into town and went through a red light and struck. Two other cars on Lahimi Road, making waiting to make a U-turn. Onto, back onto the Poly Highway, heading into town. Two of our church members were injured critically and are still in the hospital. And I was just wondering. What can be done to enhance traffic safety, because? We all know how dangerous the highway is, I've lived at my prison home for sixty-seven years. And have seen many traffic fatalities and traffic accidents. So I was wondering what can be done to slow the motorist down, I know that we recently had. Those sidewalk, race sidewalks. Installed, the cars are still speeding. I was wondering what can we do as a concerned community? To mitigate the dangers, because we have a lot of. We have four embassies, we have preschools, elementary school, we daycare centers, we have a care home. And we have thousands of residents. And we are afraid. I no longer cross Poly Highway to go running by Dawson, where I usually run. Um, because of the danger. So I was wondering what can be done to enhance traffic safety, because? I don't hear any. Uh, traffic enforcement as far as catching speeders. And that is a major concern that we have.
Thank you, we'll let the sergeant respond on his behalf and then you can also defer to. Anyway, go ahead Sergeant, you have the floor.
Also, basically, what as far as the Honolulu Police Department, what we can do is we would have to. Do traffic enforcement. Uh, if it's shooting a laser like, you know, looking for speeders or any type of traffic violations. Um, in that area, um, the hard part is, uh, it just depends on how much. Uh, what's happening at the time as far as patrol officers, if they're available. Um, to be in that area, now, I'm not sure where you're talking about, that's a little bit above my, the District One area. But, um, I do know that. Uh, you know, HPD, they do, it's a known area where speeder, people coming down from the Poly. Heading into town, it's it's very easy to speed over there and it's a known area where HPD does shoot. Uh, shoot or conduct la- uh, laser enforcement or speed enforcement in that area. Um, now, as far as, uh, if. Um, if the patrol, patrol officers are available to do that type of enforcement, depending on what time of the day. I'm not sure, it depend, every district is different. Um, but the department, right, the department is stepping up its traffic enforcement. Um, I can, I can let my lieutenant and my my captain know that maybe we, if we have any overtime. Projects, speed enforcement projects that we can maybe shift some of those resources to the Poly Highway area. Um, to to try and stop that, that's all what HPD can do. Um, as far as the speed bumps and 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 things like that. You know, I know they put speed bumps in it, that's actually one of the, that's actually a great deterrent. For to stop speeding and it just takes, you know, some time for drivers to realize. There's speed bumps there and people will slow down, it's just the people who are not familiar with the area. That, you know, that's a little different, right? So that's pretty much what HPD can do, as far as the city or road planning does that, we 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 don't take care of that. But, um, that's something that we can look into.
Thank you Sergeant Sekia for your response, I know. Speeding is one of the priority, I mean slowing down speeding is one of the priorities of the Department of Transportation and hopefully we have a member. Attending tonight, and you, we can address that question from Mister Community Member Two. If you don't mind hanging out a little bit, it'll come up on the agenda, unless we have someone here from the department. Oh, well, we will handle that when we get to that section, do we have any more public concerns? We don't?
I.
Hello, excuse me, oops.
Excuse me, yes.
Hi.
I have a concern.
Paula, we already passed the board section, but yeah, go ahead.
I was, I was gonna tell him information wise, they're entering the valley at fifty-nine miles an hour. And they're leaving the valley at fifty-seven miles an hour. For the man that was speaking earlier, just so you know, and that was taken three weeks ago. Now, even with the speed bumps, even with the sidewalks, it's not, it's not working. Thank you.
Thank you Paula, that was very informative and again, we can address the same issue to the Department of Transportation's representative. If they're in the audience tonight, they were invited, so let's hope that they will be here. Anyone else, um, if not, anyone else from the community, yes?
Uh, hello, excuse me.
Hi, identify yourself.
Uh, so this is Mark Oyama, the resident with the concern of the speed pump and associated district at Poly Highway. So I stepped away from my phone for a bit. Oh, sorry.
No, you're.
I stepped away from my. Oh, I stepped away from my phone for a bit, so I'm not sure who was talking before I came on just now, but.
Uh, Mister Oyama, it was. It was a public member named Mister Joseph Chu from Country Club Road that spoke. Did you have a question for Police Department District Five? I'm sorry, District, District One, sorry Sergeant. Brian Sekia?
Uh, uh, no, I mean, I can review the the video transcript of this session later, so I just wanted to state that I'm here. And.
Okay, thank you.
As as, yeah, as you mentioned, I think it's better, it, maybe it'll be better if I save my concern for after the Department of Transportation comes on today and. Uh, gives their presentation or whatever they're going to say, if that's okay.
Yep, that'll be under President's Concerns, Community Concerns.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, I'll save mine until after then, yep, okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, District One for your report, Mister Sergeant Brian Sekia. Um, thank you again for coming and for providing information to us. I am now moving on, thank you. I'll now move on to Honolulu Police Department District Five, I see we might have Sergeant R King in the audience.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Hello, my name is Sergeant Robert King and I am actually the Sector Sergeant for the night shift. For the area in which we are here at, so we. Consist of from Leke Leke Highway all the way to Poly Highway, everything above the freeway on the Maoka side. Um, just to touch upon before I go into my stats for the Poly Highway concern. We have been stepping up our speeding enforcement, we have quite a few officers throughout our shift from. Six P M all the way till about five A M, they're taking turns randomly doing speed enforcement. And on average, we average probably around maybe ten to eighteen speeding citations. Within that timeframe, um, depending on the amount of speed, we also have some excessive speedings. We also do have a couple overtime projects in which officers have little teams and they. Enforce traffic also along the Poly Highway, because we do understand that that is a big concern for the community. So we're trying to do as much as we can, um, in reality, we only have about four officers that maintain that area from Leke Leke. All the way to Poly, from above the freeway all the way to the tunnels, so we do our best as time allows us and. We are actually stepping up enforcement because of community concerns, so we are aware of that. Um, but in terms of our August stats, uh, for District Five. Uh, for aggravated assaults, we had one reported in July and then one reported in August. For auto thefts, we had two reported in July and one reported in August. Burglaries, we had one in July and then we unfortunately went up to two in August. For robberies and sex assaults or rapes, we're at zero, which is a blessing. Simple assaults, in July, we had two and in August, we had one, so that was a decrease. For general thefts such as pickpocket, purse snatching, shoplifting, theft of vehicle accessories, bicycles, theft from buildings. Coin machines and others, we had four reported in July and unfortunately, we had seven reported in August. For vehicle break-ins, we had four reported in July and it stayed at four for August. Total calls for service, we had eight hundred and twenty-three calls for service in July and we went up to eight hundred and forty-three. Calls in August, as you can tell, most of these increases were all property crimes and. As with, we always do recommend that you don't leave anything valuable in your vehicles, you try to secure up. Don't leave any windows unlocked when you're leaving the home or anything like that, if you have sliding windows, by all means, go to City Mill, Home Depot. Buy a bunch of those little wooden dolls, cut them down to your length and put them in the track. Which prevents anyone from prying that window open and gaining entry into your residence. If you have lubored windows, we do make sure that you try and close it as tightly as possible. To avoid any hands being able to remove those lubers and then getting in that way also. Always make sure that you secure, your neighborhood may be a safe neighborhood, but all it takes is one time. Where unfortunately, less desirables are driving around and they're going to look for easy pickings, so always make sure that you secure your doors. And windows, even if you're going to a neighbor's house to drop off fruits or whatever the case may be. So just make sure that you're vigilant yourself in protecting your property, you guys worked hard for it, you guys should protect it.
Thank you Sergeant King for the stats and for answering the question and for your kind words of wisdom. Members, do you have any questions for Sergeant Robert King? Please say, I do, or you'll be recognized and I will scroll. Paula, oh, you are recognized, go ahead.
I want to say to you Sergeant, thank you for District Five. I know you folks work really, really hard and you have car four. And because I'm in five, seven, three, I want to tell you, I see the speeding. I've right, we've already had two people killed and whatever you folks can do. Add on to what Brian, Sergeant Brian said, please, please, please continue. And if you want to use my driveway to do your reports, so you don't have to go back to District Five. You know Kalihie, um, you can stay in Nu'u Anu to cool heights and. Use yourself to come up into my driveway and I won't ask a question because I know you're there. Okay?
We appreciate that, thank you Paula.
Good report.
Great, thank you. Thank you both, members, do you have any other, any other members have any other questions? Shout out, nope, okay, I will move on to the public members, do we have anyone here from the public?
Hello.
Yes, member Ellis.
Yeah.
You have the floor, go ahead.
Okay, this is on two District Five. When you have a evening shift, how often are you making stops or drive through the parking lot? At Nu'u Anu Valley Park?
Uh, we do understand that Nu'u Anu Valley Park is a concern. For people who loiter, people who are picking flowers and foliage unnecessarily or illegally. Dropping off chickens, cats and whatnot, we also understand potential drug activity. So our officers do try and make rounds as best as they can if the caseload allows them to. Um, but we are aware of it and we do make sure that our officers do their park checks and our school checks. And whatnot to make sure that no one is hanging out where they're not supposed to, especially when the parks are closed. If they are, we do cite them for being in the park during closed hours, of course, all of those tags go to court. We always take pictures of the person involved, we also make sure that we take pictures of the sign. We try to cross our Ts, dot our Is, so that the courts really can't do anything except. The blue sign says the park is closed, they were there when it was closed, so plain and simple. Um, what happens after that at the courts? I wish I could give you an answer, but like Sergeant Sekia said, that is a different jurisdiction and we don't control what the courts will. Decide to keep or enforce. After that, but we do make our checks, especially after ten P M, when they're not supposed to be there.
The question was, how often do you make checks? Is it once an hour or every couple hours or? Once during the night and that's it?
I would, I would say probably at least two to three times Mister Ellis.
Okay, could you make it a point to, to at least go to the park at ten o'clock when it is closed? So you can see how many cars are left and how many people are still roaming in the park?
And this is.
Some sense of security to the residents in the valley.
And just want to confirm, this is Nu'u Anu District Park?
Nu'u Anu Valley Park.
Valley, okay, Nu'u Anu Valley Park, I'll make sure our guys.
It's located on Poly Highway and Pu'iva Road, right next door to. Daughters of Hawaii, Queen of Us, Summer Palace.
Okay, understood.
And could we make particular attention to the restroom area? Um, it would be great if we could secure the restroom area with gates and everything, but. For now, we just need to have a presence there more often than it is.
Okay, I'll make sure that I pass on that information to our personnel. Um, of course, with the gates on the restrooms and whatnot, that has to be a petition through Parks and Rec, since they manage the parks itself.
We have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, public member Ellis and thank you Sergeant King. Anyone else? Do we have anyone else from the public that has any questions? Okay, I see none, thank you District Five Sergeant King for your attendance, we really appreciate your report, that was very informative.
You too.
Oh, thank you. Okay, moving on, we have the Neighborhood Security Watch Reports by Miss Paula Corchige. Paula, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, um, I had originally worked with. You Ray on the, on the last three boards. Um, regarding the park. And we do have, I had worked in the park for two years to be a volunteer. Six in the morning till ten at night, I would open and close along with another man. Now, when I talked to HPD District Five this last time, they said they would. Um, be there at midnight and check the park for anyone being in there and they would only check it once. But hearing it from you Sergeant would be even greater and Mike, thank you Mike Ellis for bringing up the other two questions. Now, as far as getting a volunteer, District Five said they cannot put in a volunteer because it's too dangerous. The second thing is, if it's too dangerous, then we needed C P. I tried to ask C P if they would again involve them, uh, someone. To go over there and check it once in a while, but no one has called me back. So I don't know if District Five knows that C P has been involved with the park, just so you know that Sergeant, thank you.
Thank you Paula, Sergeant King, any response about community policing? Nope, if not, I think he's, he left the meeting or, thank you Paula for your Neighborhood Security Watch Report. Members, do you have any questions for Miss Paula Corchige? Nope, I'll take that as a no. Do we have anyone from the public asking? About the same issue, Neighborhood Security Watch? Nope, thank you so much Paula for your report. Keep up the good work. Next on the agenda is item number D, the Board of Water Supply, do we have someone here from the Board of Water Supply in attendance? Perhaps at the Neighborhood Commission?
Yes, we do.
Oh, please, go ahead.
Hi.
Yeah.
Hi, I think they hear you. Okay, okay, hello, okay.
Good evening.
Uh, good evening everyone. My name is Jimmy Yanos. I'll be representing for the Water Supply tonight. Going over some concerns and questions from last month. Uh concerning the Dalsette and Pu'iva Water Systems Improvement Project, our update remains the same as last month in that all required documents have been submitted to the State Historic Preservation Division, or ship D for review. We continue attending monthly meetings with ship D staff and also have a separate monthly session with their director. And the focus of these meetings is to address this project alongside other high priority EWS projects and issues. And there was also a a concern about water supply vehicles speeding in the Nu'u Wano area. And is here to report that if anyone observes BWS vehicles speeding or driving recklessly, please note the license plate number and contact the BWS Communications Office for a follow-up at eight oh eight seven four eight five zero four one. The BWS takes driving safety seriously and we will investigate all reports. So next is my main break report. There were two main breaks in the month of August. The first occurred on August sixteenth, that was a four-inch diameter pipe at twenty-five, twenty-nine, pi sixty-one. And the second occurred on August nineteenth, that was eight-inch diameter pipe at two zero two two. And finally is the general water announcements. I'm going to be talking about the Imagine a Day Without Water event. Bringing the entire Ohana for this year's annual Imagine a Day Without Water Day. A free, family-friendly event on Saturday, September twentieth, from ten A M to two P M at Woodward Mall Center Court. During the event, you'll learn about the One Water concept and why water is essential to every part of life. Explore interactive displays from over twenty city, state and community organizations. And enjoy hands-on activities and prize giveaways, including a forty-five gallon rain barrel and much more. Find out more at W W W dot waterwatersupply dot com slash One Water Hawaii. And uh I have a flyer that I opened because you can't at this time that I left on table in the back if anybody would like uh more information. But that's the end of my report, so uh I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you Mister Yanos. Next time, if you want to give us the flyer, send it to me ahead of time and I'll post it on our Google Drive for the board members. Okay, yeah, you can give it to me ahead of time, email it to me and I'll post it on our shared drive and then everyone can see the flyer. Okay. Oh, I don't hear you. Sorry, can you hear me?
Oh, sorry, we had it, we had it muted. Um but um I was telling Jimmy that, yeah, we can, I can upload it as well too, or we can send it to you, it doesn't matter.
Okay, thank you. All right, board members, do you have any questions for Mister Yanos from the Board of Water Supply? You can shout out. I don't see any hands raised at this time. I'll ask one question. Mister Yanos, when your office meets with ship D, the status seems to be the same every month. Is there a reason why this constantly occurs? Is it because they're short-staffed? Um or is the project that complicated that the review is taking quite a while?
Uh, I, I have heard that they are short-staffed at ship D. Um but yeah, we have submitted all our documents that we, for them and we need, we can't start the project without their.
True, true. Okay, oh, we're just anxious to see that start, you know, moving, moving ahead and that's the Dalsette Water Improvements Project. Thank you. Any other members have any questions? If not, I'm going to call the members of the public. Do we have anyone from the public in attendance? Has a question for Mister Yanos from the Board of Water Supply? As I scan through the attendance virtually, I don't see anyone raising their hands or shouting out. So that means, thank you Mister Yanos for your report once again. We do appreciate it and the tips as well. Have a good evening.
Sorry, uh just for reference, my, my last name is Yanos, Y A N O S.
Thank you Mister Yanos for the call. My apologies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I will note that in my notes. I don't make that mistake again. Okay, I'm going to move to item number three, filling of vacancies. We now have four vacancies in Sub District One, which is the punch bowl area. Uh proof of residency required. Do we have anyone in the public that would like to be a part of the board and be a community volunteer? Would like to fill one of our vacancies or does any member know of anyone that might be interested? Shout out.
This is.
Yes. Yes, Ms. Paula, you have the floor.
There's something on the screen and it doesn't go away.
There's something on the screen?
It says recording, recording is in progress.
Oh, Rachel, would you be able to make that go away?
Please.
That's a local alert. Paula has to take care of it on her own.
Oh, Paula has to.
Yeah, she has to do it. It is just one of our.
Sorry Paula, unless you know how to do it. We don't want to lose you from the meeting.
I know how to do it.
Okay, I guess you'll have to.
Push any button, there's no buttons to push.
Oh, you'll just have to listen to us. Thank you.
Oh, there you go.
Oh, got it. Okay, anyone else?
Thank you Mister Lum. Lum, 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 sorry.
Thank you Mister Lum for that advice. All right, if there's no one on the filling of vacancies, I'll constantly leave that on the agenda just to solicit interest from the public. I'll move on to item number four, the termination of the board's second recess date. So the board previously voted on a recess for December sixteenth, that meeting. And we ha, we do have the option to have a second optional month, which would be October, February to June of twenty twenty-six. I would like to withdraw October because I had promised this telecommunications company who's on the agenda tonight, um they said that they were unable to make it and can make it at the next meeting. So I would like to ask respectfully, ask the members if we could withdraw that for consideration because they need to send out notices to the public before meeting with the board. So they're not going to be in attendance tonight and they will present it at the next meeting. So that means your options would be for the months from February to June of twenty twenty-six. And this is to recess for the fiscal year of July twenty twenty-five to um June twenty twenty-six. So do we have a motion to discuss?
If it requires a motion to discuss, even though it's already a uh agenda item, I'll make that motion.
Great, Vice Chair Lum has made the motion. Do we have a second? I see Patrick.
Second.
Vice Chair Lum and Patrick Smith, um second the motion. Any, okay, let's have the discussion. Do we have any proposals for the next month to recess? So it can't be close to December, which is why it's from February to June. Go ahead, Mister Lum, what was that? Or who had the, go ahead.
Well, I had a question. Um basically a question of clarification that we did take a recess, a second recess last or earlier this year. And I believe it was March, um I wanted to, if anybody could refresh my memory on that, I very much appreciate it.
Oh, my apologies, I. Does anyone recall a recess last term? Mister Smith, will you?
No, I, I, I don't, but I would say that uh you know, our requirements to meet yearly are actually from July to June. So I, I don't recall exactly uh when we recessed, but uh you know, it, it does start new every, every July, so that makes any difference.
So does every, anyone have any proposals, any suggestions?
I do.
Yes, Ms. Member Young. You have the floor?
Um. I believe in the past, we have taken August, October, March. So I think at this point, to even it out, we we said we're going to do December, right? December's already done, so I would look at March or May.
Okay, so would you want to pick one?
So I mean, that's where I'm thinking because we start a new term on July, so halfway would be March.
Do you select March to propose?
Yeah, I think that'll, that'll be a good one, but I, I hate to do it in March or April because the legislature is in session and there might be things that we want to discuss, so I think, but at this point, if we want to take a second one, I probably would do it in March.
So, we have a proposal for March on the table. Anyone else have any discussions? If not, that would probably stand as the option for the motion. Please feel free to speak, members. Raise your hand or say something if you have any comments.
We don't have a second.
Second.
Okay. All right, Ms. Young and Ms. Khorshige. The proposal on the table to recess is for March twenty twenty-six. Any discussion or shall we take the vote? I don't hear anyone, so let's take the vote. Is that all good with you, all of you? Shall we do a roll call or does anyone have any objections to March being the selected month for the board to recess as the second, second date, second month? Does anyone have any abstentions? So I take that as a no to the first one, no to the second one. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Sounds like three people.
Aye.
Four. We need to do a roll call. Five.
Um, Madam Chair, if I, if, if I could add, if no one objected, if no one objected, then the vote stands. You don't need to do the call, you don't, okay, no worries.
I apologize, I will never get this motion. No one has objected therefore. Motion stands. Thank you. Okay, so we will be recessing in March of twenty twenty-six. We do realize it's a legislative session, but um the board has opted to take a recess. Thank you so much. That will be removed from my next um agenda item. We'll move on to item number five, report from non-board events. Starting with the Oahu MPO, the Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization, I'll make a quick report. I attended the September fourth, twenty twenty-five Oahu MPO meeting. They had an open house, I'm sorry, not September. They had an, oh, it was the first Wednesday of the month. They had an open house, people came to chat with them. And if, since this was in the past, they are also inviting the public to come chat with them at the Fasi Municipal Building on Wednesday, October first, from four thirty to six thirty P M. There will be a stand there, so you, you'll be able to see them there and they're going to pass out free gelato. So if you're interested, the date is October first, right after work, four thirty to six thirty. There were sixty traffic fatalities uh reported in January of twenty twenty-five, twelve more in the last month of August. They had doubled the debt, they mentioned that there were double the amount of deaths and last year they had twenty-nine traffic fatalities. Please drive with aloha. They also mentioned at the meeting that another event that's coming up is a week without driving from September thirtieth to October fifth. It is about raising awareness on how communities feel when cars are not the default. Meaning, everyone takes other options of transportation. They're giving away ten limited Oahu MPO Holo, ten limited edition Oahu MPO Holo cards. These are transit carts loaded with a seven-day bus pass and ten three-day B K bike passes. Be one of the first twenty to sign up for a week without driving. All you have to do is email them. It's called weekwithoutdriving dot org. And lastly, for the Oahu Long Range Transportation Plan, they set up a dashboard for transportation trends and goals and I will put that in, put all this information in the chat. So that's the end of my report. Does any board members have any questions? Please say so since I'm going to have to scan really quick. I don't see anyone's hands out. But that's what we talk about at these meetings and all the neighborhood boards are in attendance as well as the unions and planning officials and, um you know, AR. I forgot the name of that organization, but yeah, so that's, that's just what happens. Okay, the next item B is the Papakalia Community Updates. Vice Member Chair Mike Lum, do you have any report this month?
I do. Um, there's two things, uh two things to talk about Papakalia. Uh first is basically there's going to be a major sewer update in the area. In fact, it's already started. Uh that's going to be uh take, tearing up streets and actually quite a bit of work at night. I believe everybody who's in the affected area did receive a mailer notifying you of times and um the work in area where the work is going to be done. One thing to note is that the stairway leading up from Oa'ailimu to, I believe it's Iokua, will be torn out, so that is a common. Um you know, it will be replaced after the work is done, but while they're doing the work, they do have to remove the stair. Um that is a common route for schoolchildren to take from the upper portion of Papakalia down to Lincoln and Stevenson. So uh if you're driving in that area, please be aware that students may now be on different parts of the road as opposed to taking that stairway. Uh the second thing of interest is that the, the, the community development uh of the new Hawaiian Cultural Center is in full swing. They are having meetings uh fair, fairly frequently. There was a interesting meeting last week about the Mo'olo of the Papakalia area. And in the next month, there are going to be three co-design meetings where they're discussing the actual building sites as well as architectural designs and uh other concepts uh for the cultural center. Um if you're interested, these are all taking place at the, the public, Papakalia Community Center. Uh they are Monday nights, uh let's see, the three dates in October are uh Monday the sixth, the twentieth and the twenty-seventh. And these are at six P M in the community center in the upper hall, so it's the one that's upstairs there. Uh they're open to the public. Um so if you just wanted to go and listen to see what this new center is going to look like and what, what sort of things are going on is very interesting. So um other than that, uh for general Papakalia community announcements, uh you can go to papakalia dot org and it's a, it has pretty much all announcements as well as a few other activities and things that are going on. And with that, I will yield the floor.
Thank you, uh Vice Chair Lum. Members, do you have any questions for Vice Chair Lum's Papakalia Report? Please shout out. I don't see any hands raised. Oh, yes, go ahead, Member Young.
There is, somebody else has their hand up. I don't know if uh Member Young has a question. Yeah, that's my hand. It's Puny.
Oh.
Oh, oh, good, Puny. You're here, you're going to do the report much better than I would. I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
No, no, Mike, thank you so much for that report. Appreciate it, appreciate it. Hi, everybody, this is Puny Kekahoha. Um I'd like to provide the Neighborhood Board an update regarding the Po'wina site. The fourteen and a half acres that starts from Oa'ailimu right above Lincoln School and runs the skirt of Po'wina or Punch Bowl to Prospect.
So right now, uh, there are two nonprofit organizations that have right-of-entry permits from the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. One is to the Papakalea Community Development Corporation that Mike had chaired tonight, the Native Hawaiian Culture Education and Culture Center. And that is under, um, where the Executive Director Lilia Kapunia. On the other side of that property on Prospect on the Stevenson side, the entity that has that right-of-entry permit with the department is Kula Nona Pue Hawaii. I am the project director for that project on that side. Adrian Dillard is our C E O. So on that side, the proposal with the department is to develop a Kupuna Supported Living Center. It is a large project like Lilia's. Um, so you have two nonprofits developing two projects on opposite sides of that, of that, um, mountain or that, of that, that ridge, okay? So right now, we are in the stage of community conversations and master, and, and creating a master plan for both, uh, projects, okay? So, the contractor is G seventy, who's working with us, both entities. And then, um, we on the cooler side have conducted a series of about eight community conversations since January of twenty twenty five. And, uh, we are currently, like Lilia, working on our master plan and everything we need in terms of due diligence in order to take the next step. So, um, just wanted to let you folks know that that entire portion of land is currently, uh, you know, under the, we have site control of that property. Uh, Lilia has half of it on behind Lincoln, and we have the site above Stevenson. So we at Kula are currently, um, we've working with the neighbors on Prospect and the people that live at Royal Vista adjacent to that property. In July, June twenty twenty five, the Department of Hawaiian Homelands and Honolulu Police Department went into the mountain and took down over twenty homeless encampments. They bought them down and they removed all of the tents and everything that's been up there for over five years. And they actually ticketed everybody that was up there. So they're trespassing. So Papakalea now has stewardship over the entire Mauna, that mountain. The Department of Hawaiian Homelands has instructed both nonprofits to contact H P D as soon as we see people coming back onto that aina. Uh, we are asked not to approach anybody. Um, some of them have some serious police criminal records. Um, and for, for the safety of community, we are not, um, we are not, we, we are being asked not to approach. So, um, both Lilia and I are, and us are watching that property. Um, some of our men are actually walking dogs on a property without permission to make sure the property is clear. So when you guys drive by that mountain on Oa'ailimu and you look to the right, that land is all clear. That land was cleared out in June and July. And it's pretty much clear of homeless that, that we can see. Uh, we're checking it from the top and from the bottom, uh, from Oa'ailimu and from the top in Punchbowl. So I wanted to report that to the Neighborhood Board. Um, we are actively community planning to develop a Kupuna Supported Living Center and an Educational Culture Center on the Lincoln School side. Um, any questions? Uh, we are also actively working and in, and keeping our elected officials up to date of where we are. Do you think that's good? Thank you so much, everybody.
For that great report and keep up the good work.
I do have a question.
Thank you, yes.
Puni or I do see Kaua Puni here as well. I would love to see the report to one of you two. If you guys would like to come to our meetings and give a very good report. Um, it'd be much better coming from you than it would from me. Um, do you think it could interest one of you guys in doing that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that, that's why I'm here tonight, but.
Oh, excellent. Okay, yes.
Yeah, one of us will be here to, to take the Papakalea report, yeah.
Excellent, thank you.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else have a question for? For Ms. Ke'kauha? If not, that is, uh, no board members with any other questions, anybody from the public? Uh, now's your time to ask. If not, thank you again for your great report. Um, appreciate you coming to our, and attending our meeting, and thank you as well, Vice Chair Lum. We appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to item number six. The residents and community concerns are both limited to three minutes each. And now's the opportunity for the public. If you're, if your project is not on the agenda and you're a resident or part of the community, you can, you know, state your concern, but we're not allowed to have discussions on this. The members are not allowed to have discussions because it's not on the agenda explicitly, but you can, um, state your concerns. So, please go ahead. Do we have anyone from the public? Or any resident that would like to speak about their issue or concern and bring that to, the attention to the board?
I have my hand raised if you saw it.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't see it, Mr. Bill.
Yeah, Bill. My name's, yeah, I'm from the State Climate Commission.
Oh, yes. You have a community concern? You're gonna be speaking as a resident or?
Well, um, when can I speak about the climate action plan that I, I'd emailed? Is that later?
Um, you wanted to present the climate action?
Present, presentations B looks like, uh, there's an agenda item for it.
Yeah. Presentations, item B, yes. So, um, if you don't mind holding off to item number nine.
Yep, not a problem. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public that has any, um, community concerns? If not, we're gonna move on to the next section, which is the elected officials. Starting with Mayor Rick Blandiardi's representative, Ms. Kim Hashiro. Are you in the audience? Nope, I don't hear. Oh, there she is. Hi.
I'm, I'm here. Hi.
Hi. You have the floor.
Okay, thank you. So I have highlights from the mayor's newsletter, which I will link in the chat. The city honored, um, Oahu's Purple Heart recipients during a ceremony at Honolulu Halei. Um, there are also Purple Heart signs, um, posted, um, near Honolulu Halei, and you will begin to see those in different, um, areas of the city. Heart breaks ground on a new, uh, guideway and rail station um, across the third segment of the rail project from Kalihii to Kakaako. The U S Department of Housing and Urban Development's Region Nine Administrator visited Honolulu Halei to discuss housing and homelessness with Hawaii's mayors. New members of the Honolulu Youth Commission were sworn in during a ceremony at Honolulu Halei. And Oahu's junior lifeguards returned from the state championship event in Maui with a historic victory. Um, I'd also like to mention that the Honolulu Charter Commission is conducting its once-a-decade review of the city charter, which serves as Honolulu's constitution. Community members are invited to submit proposals by November seventh, twenty twenty five. The commission will also be holding community meetings in October. Dates, times, and locations are available on the Charter Commission website. We encourage everyone to participate in this important process, and I will link the commission's website also in the chat. There were, um, a few departmental follow-up items from last meeting. So the first is regarding, um, clearing overgrown vegetation near twenty-one seventy-seven Po'waina Drive. Resident Dan Ke'kahuna reported overgrown weeds and brush near the entrance of the National Memorial Cemetery of the Pacific at, um, the stated address and requested investigation. Um, so what occurred is a, um, case was opened to request that the Department of Planning and Permitting investigate the situation for appropriate action. And I'm, I would anticipate that we'll get an update in a future meeting. Second item was to, um, a request to consider additional evacuation routes near New Uanu Elementary. And a resident suggested that the city consider opening roads near New Uanu Elementary School around Puiva Road, Lower Dalseth, and Wood Street during emergencies to reduce traffic on Poli Highway. Please consider for inclusion in local hazard mitigation plan and evacuation protocols. So this request was submitted to the Department of Emergency Management, and they did request an extension to submit the response. So this will be included on the October or subsequent month report. And that's my report and open for any further questions or comments.
Thank you, Director Hashiro for that report. That was very informative. Members, do we have any questions for Director Kim Hashiro tonight? Yes, Paula, you are recognized. Go ahead.
I wanna tell you, um, Ms. Kim, thank you so much for doing that with the emergency vehicle kind of thing. That really needs.
You're welcome, Paula.
I also spoke with somebody in the legislature to bring it up because yeah, once that closes up, we'll have no escape. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kurosigae. Other members, do you have any questions for Director Hashiro?
Madam Chair, I do.
Yes, Vice Chair, please, go ahead.
Uh, Director Hashiro, I'd just like to clarify a little on the, uh, the overgrowth on Po'waina Drive. Um, this is, there's actually a relatively large drainage area there. Um, basically, the, the gutter along the street is about four feet wide. Um, and it leads into a sewer. At this point, enough vegetable debris has fallen and grown in that area that that sewer is completely clogged. So if, um, if that helps with getting people out there to talk about basically a, a blocked sewer line, um, that would be, you know, maybe throw that little bit of information in there. Thank, thank you.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll definitely, um, add that to the follow-up and, um, relay that to, to D P P.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair, and, um, thank you, Director Hashiro. Members, any other questions for Director Hashiro? Um, I might have one for Director Hashiro, and this is from a resident who lives on Pacific Heights Road. And this is about an overgrown banyan tree at two-five-zero-two Pacific Heights Road, and it's also near a bus stop. And the concern was that the banyan tree, um, trunks and leaves have been falling on the roadway, and it also fell on the bus stop. And we were wondering if you could check with D P P to see if there's any way to get the property owner to trim the tree back or issue any violations because it's turning into a major hazard and we looked at it on Google Maps and it looks pretty scary. So I.
Yes, we'll definitely report that.
Thank you. I think I listed it on the agenda the last meeting, but the resident was unable to attend.
Okay.
And I think I, I did email D T S, and I think they are working on it, but if you could just follow up with them on that, that would be great because we don't want the bus stop to get damaged as well. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks. Any other members have any questions for Director Hashiro? Thank you, Director Hashiro, for, um, answering all our questions. We always overload you with a lot of concerns, and we do appreciate your efforts in finding us great responses and closing the cases as they come along. We do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Thanks. Okay, item number B. Do we have someone from Councilmember Paler Dos Santos Tem's office in the audience? Nope. Doesn't sound like it. Okay. I will move on to item C, Governor Josh Green's representative. I see Kayla here from D C C A. You may have the floor. Hi.
Uh, good evening, everyone. I apologize that I was not able to be here for the August meeting. Um, I did wanna, wanna share some highlights from the September governor's newsletter, which I'll also share in the chat. And then afterwards, I wanted to address the two questions that I had received in the July meeting that I had planned to, um, share more information on last month. Um, so just some quick highlights from this month's newsletter. Uh, the Department of Land and Natural Resources is now accepting land preservation grant applications for the fiscal year of twenty twenty-six, um, which they hope to offer protection of valuable Hawaiian lands. Um, U H Manoa unveiled its newest student housing facility, uh, Hale Ha'akani, which is expected to provide housing for students and faculty as well as ease the rental market by freeing up off-campus units that would otherwise be occupied by U H students. And lastly, an emergency proclamation named Operation Po'o'pa'ohi um, was signed by the state in July eighteenth, uh, which grants the Hawaii National Guard permission to have an air crew on standby to provide aerial firefighting capabilities um, to augment first responder efforts in the case of wirefire, wired fires and critical events. Uh, the proclamation has allowed for critical assistance into recent August, uh, fire events. And then the two questions that I had received, um, in the July meeting, so the first one was from Sylvia, I believe. Um, I believe it was after a recent brush fire that had occurred in July, and it was in regards to Kula Kula Pass. Um, and specifically what steps the state is taking to ensure it remains a viable and accessible, uh, evacuation route. And so the information that I had received from D O T in Ha'ima is that Kula Kula Pass is currently serving as a, uh, evacuation route, and during the July twenty-ninth Kamchak tsunami warning, it successfully supported the evacuation of four hundred and ten vehicles. Um, and the state continues to work closely with the Navy, Army, and emergency management partners to ensure the pass will remain open and accessible when needed. Um, and then the second question that I had received was from Paula. Um, and it was in regards to what's actions the state is taking to protect the endangered Hawaiian duck, the Kaloa population in New Uanu, and then also is D L N R, uh, considering relocating the mallard ducks in New Uanu to prevent interbreeding. So this was the information that I had received from D L N R. Um, D L N R is actively working to protect the Kaloa. The pears population is currently found on Kauai, but the department is planning potential reintroductions onto the other islands to support the species recovery, although this project is still in its early stages. Um, and they just wanna ensure careful planning to ensure the program's long-term success. Um, and then as for the relocation, they had stated that relocation of ducks in New Uanu is currently not being pursued at this time. However, they're hopeful that their long-term strategies will um, still build a healthier and sustainable, uh, Kaloa population across the state. And that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Kayla, for that report. That was informative. Members, do you have any questions for the governor's representative? Did I see Sylvia? No. Feel free to speak up. Nope. Any member of the, oh, Sylvia, did you have any questions? No?
No, I don't have any.
Thank you. Okay, so no board members have any questions for the governor's representative? I will ask members of the public. Those in attendance, do you have any questions for the governor's representative? If not, it doesn't seem like it. So thank you once again, Ms. Kayla, for your report. We really do appreciate your attendance tonight. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay. Up next is District Thirteen, Senator Carl Rhodes, and I do see he is in attendance. Senator Rhodes, you have the floor. Up next is District Thirteen, Senator Carl Rhodes, and I do see he is in attendance. Senator Rhodes, you have the floor.
Nice. Good evening, everyone. Nice to be, nice to be here virtually. Um, uh, just run through my report real quick. Hawaiian Electric is informing their Oahu customers of various financial assistance programs available to them. Uh, the Hawaii House, I'm sorry, the Hawaii Home Energy Assistance Program, each heap provides help for households in crisis who will be just, might be disconnected from their electricity at a maximum of six hundred fifty dollars in payments per household. They also provide energy credits. Uh, payments vary for households not in crisis but who need assistance. So um, there, i- if you know of anybody in this situation, or if you're in this situation yourself, be, please be aware that there might possibly be help with your electric bill. The Attorney General is alerting Hawaii consumers who purchase generic drugs between May one, two thousand and nine, and December thirty-one, uh, twenty nineteen, that they may be eligible, receive compensation as a result of a class, class action settlement with generic drug manufacturer, a POTEX Corp. Um, I went ahead and signed up for this. It's easy to do. Uh, just take a look at the um uh, you, there's, there's a list of drugs that you can look up to see whether you've used one of those, a generic version of that in, in that timeframe. And it's a very long list. Uh, it's probably going to be a really big case. So just FYI, FYI, um, don't want people gouging us on our, uh, on our prescription costs. Uh, after, well, for months of not thinking about COVID much at all, there has been a spike. There was a spike a couple of months ago, and there's still a lot of COVID activity. So um, please take precautions to avoid getting sick. It appears that our, despite what the Central Disease Control are saying about the COVID vaccine, um, our insurers here in Hawaii are going to continue to pay for it for even, even for people who are not on the, the most in, uh, most in danger, over sixty-five, have an underlying condition, diabetes, um, asthma, anything like that. And the reason is fairly um practical. That is, it's cheaper to pay for the vaccine than to pay for someone once they're on the, once they're hospitalized. And we do have quite a number of hospitalizations. Uh, the last number I, the last number I saw was ninety. I haven't heard of any deaths, but deaths are a lagging indicator, so unfortunately, that might still happen. So uh, and flu shots also are available now, so keep that in mind. Uh, some, count, um, Board Member Young, I have not forgotten about your question about Kana Point. I did reach out to the Department of Land and Natural Resources and talked to someone there about why the road isn't open and, and it goes all the way around Kana Point. Um, their understanding was, I, I don't think this is correct, so I'm still looking at it, but th- their understanding was that there never was a road around Kana Point. It was just the railroad, but I could have sworn that, you know, in the fifties or something, you could drive around. Anyway, I haven't forgotten. Um, but she also indicated that she thought the reason it was, that there was no road route was because of the, of the nature preserve up there. But I will follow further on that. That's it.
Thank you, Senator Rhodes, for your report. That's an interesting fact. Was there a road or wasn't there a road in Kana Point? Members, do you have any questions for Senator Carl Rhodes or any comments? I don't see anyone raising their hands, so it looks like it was a thorough report. Senator, members of the public, do you have any questions for the senator? Nope. I don't see anyone speaking up.
There's a, there's a hand, Claire Santos. I saw your chat, yes. I, I know there's a road. I, I've walked out there before, but yeah.
Yeah, my uh husband and I used to ride around there with our four-wheel drives back in the early eighties.
Oh, okay.
So it wasn't a road per se, but you could go around, and then eventually that road washed out right near the, right, and it became a cliff, so it closed then. But we used to ride around in the eighties. And do things I'll never tell you what we were doing.
That is very interesting. Thank you, Ms. Kuroshegi. Remember Kuroshegi? I saw your hand up. Did you have a question?
I just wanted to tell him thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Did I miss anyone else?
I see another hand in the, in the room, in the uh.
Oh, in the neighborhood commission office?
Yeah.
Do we have someone present with a question?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I'm from Motayama. I'm here with Joe Chu, but I used to live on the West Side. And so, yeah, there was a road that used to go around, and it, and then it collapsed. You know, it just collapsed. Yeah, so you can't go that way. But yeah, we had fun back then in the eighties.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Motayama. That was really interesting. There, you have your answer, Senator Rhodes. Anyone else asking other questions or want to contribute to that conversation? If not, thank you again, Senator Rhodes.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Formative. Good night. Okay, we will move on to District Twenty-seven, Representative Jenna Takanouchi. Ms. Jenna, you have the floor.
Hi, um, my name's Kelton. Uh, I'm here on behalf of Representative Takanouchi.
Hi Kelton, go ahead, please.
Um, a couple uh outstanding issues or just the one that uh I'm aware of. The uh children's crossing sign uh surrounding New Uanu Elementary. Uh, we're still waiting on the work order uh to evaluate the intersection uh by DTS. Uh, we continue to check on it every month. Uh, as soon as we receive it, we'll make sure to pass it along. Um, and then into our main report, um, we, uh, Rep. Takanouchi wanted to highlight that we will be hosting a community resource fair in coordination with Kuakini Health System and Representative Holt. Uh, over the past several months, Rep. Takanouchi has been receiving feedback that residents would like a place to gather, and she thought, thought that sharing the good work our local organizations are doing would be a great way to get everyone together um, and share valuable information. Uh, organizations such as Lona Kila Multipurpose Senior Center, Lona Kila Pacific, St. Francis Healthcare System, uh, and Malahia Hospital, um, and many more will be in attendance. Um, the Community Resource, Resource Fair will take place on Saturday, October eighteenth, from nine AM to twelve PM noon. Um, we will make sure to send the board additional details and a flyer as we get closer to the event. Um, I'll post uh the date, the time, um, and the location, as well as the address and a additional information uh to the chat as soon as I finish. Um, she did want me to chat, uh, the representative wanted me to check, um, if the board, uh, and I saw it on the agenda, um, a little later, uh, but she wanted me to check if you guys would like a table at the uh Community Resource Fair.
Thank you. We will discuss it at that time.
Okay, great. Um, and then, um, also wanted to share that Rep. Takanouchi will be hosting office hours again in the community through a series of park talks at parks and other public spaces across District Twenty-seven. Um, as a reminder, these are informal talk story sessions with Rep. Takanouchi and other interested neighbors to get feedback on the neighborhood, the twenty twenty-five legislate legislative session, or whatever is on your mind. Uh, the next park talk will take place this Thursday, September eighteenth, uh, at Pu'Anui Community Park. Um, feel free to join for the entire time or ask your question and go on your way. And again, I'll post those details to the chat, so you have it in writing. Um, available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chaney, for your report from Representative Takanouchi's office. My understanding is that Park Talk will also handle the, um, one of the issues is, or to be discussed, or not an issue, but um, I think the project is the telecommunications project was going to be discussed. I think I saw that on the, on her agenda, so. Members, if you're interested in that telecommunications project before October, the next meeting, you can find out more information at her park talk. Okay, so members, do we have any questions for Representative Takanouchi's um associate, Kelton Chaney?
I have a question.
Yes, Paula, go ahead.
I wanted to know if Jenna, Representative Jenna has told you that I asked her to help get the emergency call vehicles through New Uanu when there's a bad accident on the Poli Highway? And she said she would help in the legislature to try to move it through. And that was a few months back.
Uh, yeah, thanks Paula. Um, I am aware of that issue. We were kind of, um, so we've reached out to a couple of different departments. Um, we haven't received any definitive word back, which is why we haven't gotten back to you yet. But I will follow up with her, uh, just check in with her, um, and we can follow up with you for sure about that.
What I was gonna tell you was, it's not just the school where I could go through. There's another street that I believe is privately owned or at the Boy Scouts that it might be able to go through to get to Lower Dalseth.
Okay.
I'm not sure of which entry it would be the best, but um, it's there, it's available, so um, that would help to alleviate some serious people getting frantic on the Poli and having to go all the way around the island to come back. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Kuroshegi. Do we have other members with any questions for the Representative's Office? If not, do we have any members from the public that have any questions for the Representative's Office? I don't hear anyone. I don't see anyone, but I could be passing it accidentally. Okay, it doesn't seem like it, so I will say thank you to Kelton Chaney for his report from Representative, oh. Before I close, we have one more question from Member Kuroshegi. Go ahead, please.
I just wanted to tell him thank you so much.
Thank you, Paula. It's always good to see you and hear from you.
And with that being said, thank you Kelton for a good report. Um, it's always informative, and we appreciate your attendance tonight. Have a good evening.
You as well. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Sorry. Next up on the agenda, federal elected officials and other elected officials. And I did see someone from Oha in the audience. Are you still at the meeting? Because if so, you can present your newsletter or report.
We have no one in person. If you weren't in person.
Okay, I thought I saw someone from Oha. Shouts. Okay, they have been trying to get on our, the agenda, and we had them listed and, and I guess I took them off, but they may attend, attend at the next meeting. Anyone else from federal elected officials or other elected officials that we missed, please speak up now?
Hi, this is Lisa from Councilmember Dos Santos Tam's office.
Oh, hi Lisa, you made it.
Yes, sorry.
No, no, go ahead, please. You can make your report for the council member.
Mahalo. Um, mahalo Chair, board members and attendees. Um, I'm Lisa Leonardo from Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos Tam's office. Um, um, if you haven't already, I invite you to subscribe to Councilmember's monthly newsletter, and I will provide information in the chat after this report. From this month's newsletter, I'd like to share the following. Uh, shared streets program. Our office is excited to be working on legislation to launch a shared streets program in Honolulu. Um, and they're designed to slow down cars with features like barriers or speed humps, giving priority to people walking, biking, and um rolling. The goal is to create safer, more inviting, and more walkable neighborhoods. Um, and so stay tuned. We'll be sharing updates as we continue working with community partners and residents to shape the program. We also have a low-income transit fare program. The low, low-income transit fare program offers discounted bus and rail fares to individuals receiving supplemental security income or SSI benefits. SSI beneficiaries are automatically eligible and do not need to apply, but must visit the Transit Pass Office at the Kalihie Transit Center to obtain a low-income transit fare holo. Required documents include an SSI benefit verification letter from the Social Security Administration, a valid photo ID with additional items such as an existing holo card or the handy van card if applicable. So for more information, you can contact the Department of Transportation Services. Um, and they are at the bus stop at honolulu.gov or eight zero eight seven six eight eight three seven two. Um, and now Oahu homeowners can maximize property tax savings with free resources. The Real Property Assessment Division will be hosting open houses at upcoming farmers markets this weekend and in the weeks ahead. Um, I encourage you, or Councilmember encourages you to share this with your constituents or you stop by yourself to talk story with volunteer realtors um and staff. The next open house will be held. Um, well, I'll, I'll share the information, but they have had it at the Kakao Farmers Market. Um, and it's a great opportunity for local homeowners to learn more about available resources and ways to maximize property tax savings. Um, this concludes my information report for this evening, and I'll include this information in the chat and a link um that you can keep in touch with us um, uh, monthly. Mahalo.
Mahalo, um, Ms. Leonardo from the Representative Dos Santos Tam's office. Members of the board, do you have any questions for uh Councilmember's office, offices representative? As I scroll through, I don't see any hands up, so you can shout out.
Paula.
Paula, yes, go ahead.
I don't, I don't want to let this go by, but uh, it was brought up by several people in our neighborhood. Since we don't get, and I know, uh, your boss gets everything done. Not that I always agree, but he, he knows how to do things the right way, I guess. But anyway, we want to know if we can get our taxes cut, because we do not have all the city transportation in this area. For us, for us in this area, we have no bus, just to get downtown. And so can we get tax cuts on doing our taxes with the tax people? So that we don't have to pay for taxi cab to go downtown, so we don't have to cross the Poli Highway. The other thing is Department of Transportation, it gives us uh raised sidewalks, et cetera. With the sidewalk on the Poli Highway on the other side of the street is crooked. It goes all the way up and doesn't come back down to, to the bus stop. It goes off to an angle. Why? I don't know. But it's very, very extremely scary to look up and see the cars coming down and you're in that uh sidewalk going up. Then you get to the other side for my seniors, you gotta climb the, the stepover and walk in grass. Sometimes it's high. I don't know what it is right now, if you get to the bus stop. So I want to get a tax cut, because we don't have a bus.
Okay, I will share that information with him. Thank you.
The second thing is, with the buildings that you folks have worked on, with him agreeing with the city council, that seniors don't need to have parking in their buildings. Uh, that's not right, because a lot of the seniors have either family coming, doctors coming, caregivers coming, no place to park their cars in the newer buildings that are on Puawina and Downa Bishop. So can you please tell them that seniors have rights too? They have cars, and they have children that want to visit them. There's no place to park.
Okay, thank you.
Good information.
We've heard that. Thank you. Thank you, Paula. Anyone else? Board members? If not. No members of the public? Any questions? Last chance. Thank you again, Ms. Leonardo, for providing all the responses to our questions and your informative report. Please have a good evening.
Mahalo. Mahalo.
Mahalo. And last call for Oha. No one here from Oha? Okay, we're gonna move on to five, six, seven, eight. Item number eight, meeting minutes. Uh, it's time for the approval of the August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes. Do we have a motion for approval, or maybe we don't have to do a formal motion, but anyone have any comments, any amendments? Board members? No? Since there are none, the, the approval of the minutes will stand for the August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes. Item number nine, presentations. We will start with the Hawaii Bicycling League Walk Bike and Drive presentation by Coordinator Paula Bender. Ms. Bender, are you in the audience?
Hi Ray, yes, I'm online. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for, go ahead, please.
Um, well, uh, I believe I sent you the video that you could show. It's less than four minutes, and then I can talk after that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I must have missed that. Oh.
All right.
See, do we have it at the neighborhood commission office? No?
Uh, okay.
I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's fine. Um, hold on just a second.
Okay. If you have it, you can, I think you can share screen.
Oh, I can, but let's, I, I just hope that the sound works, that's all.
Sure. In the meantime, I'll look really fast to see if I can find it. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I didn't realize you said that.
Um, I'm not sure the sound's gonna be good, but let's give this a shot. Here we go. And if it's not working, let me know.
Okay.
Can you hear that? Did you hear anything?
No, I don't hear anything.
Okay, okay.
Oh, you have to need to share your screen. That's why it's not showing it.
Well, I, I did click share my screen. Hold on just a second. I'll do this again.
It might take a while. Yeah, it might take a while to load. I have to wait. My apologies. I don't see the video in the email shoot.
I am just gonna talk to folks about this instead. So, um, that's September eighth was our last fatality in state regarding traffic. And I can't, I can't believe that we've gone eight days because this is really great. On, on the eighth, there were probably two or three fatalities that, that was, that were registered. Hawaii Bicycling League's Walk Bike Drive presentation is sponsored by the state HDOT to highlight the importance of pedestrian and bicycle safety on Hawaii's roads. Whether we walk, bike or drive, safety is everyone's responsibility. The Vulnerable Road Users Law is part of a broader effort to enhance safety on Hawaii roadways by addressing the risks faced by those traveling outside of motorized vehicles such as pedestrians and cyclists. Whether on foot, on a bike or in a vehicle, commuters or a traveling ohana, we recognize license plates, stickers and company logos. We merge with a wave, better yet, a shaka. And when there is a crash, we learn just how close we are. There are a few things to keep in mind when sharing the road with cyclists. There are green boxes around Oahu that give bicyclists a head start on a narrow section to reach the bike lane. Remember, when in a crash, the cyclist will always be more vulnerable, no matter who was right legally. When passing a cyclist, allow for three feet between your vehicle and them, even if it means waiting a few seconds to get by safely. And when you see sharrows, that means share the road, which are, which are a place where cyclists cannot safely drive on the shoulder of the road. Everyone has the right to be safe on Hawaii's roads. This precept in Hawaiian law originated with King Kamehameha the first in seventeen ninety-seven. The law was added to the Hawaii State Constitution in nineteen seventy-eight. Please kukua, make the right decisions. Driving with aloha means everyone has a great day. If anybody has any comments, they can email me, paula@hbl.org. What I just want to emphasize is the Vulnerable Road Users Law. Um, and anybody that's outside of a car, a truck, a bus is considered a vulnerable road user. So that means if anybody in a car, bus or truck hits somebody such as a, someone on an e-bike or a moped or scooter or a bicycle or a pedestrian, there are higher penalties and fines because legal or not, the vulnerable user is always to be protected. And that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you, Ms. Bender. That was informative about walking and biking and riding. Members, do you have any questions for Ms. Paula Bender relating to her presentation? The shout out, if you'd like to be recognized?
Paula.
Paula.
Paula, go ahead, please.
My name's Paula too.
I see that. Thank you. Nice to see you, Paula.
Then my Hawaiian name is Pa'ula.
Pa'ula, that's right.
Not O'Paula. You wouldn't get that one. Okay.
No, I know what that is. Okay.
As a physical therapist for four years, I introduced to the legislature the need for helmets. Each year we give out X amount of helmets. We've given out a lot through Yamani, Yamani Shoulder, that group.
The law firm.
Plus, plus one other, the Queens Hospital, HPD, HPU and ourselves because of deaths. Now, if you can get them to get some of those helmet people to realize to wear them, that would be great. But I don't see it happening, even if we've given it out. Even in certain areas here in New Uwano and Papapalea, which I gave out lots of free helmets. That, that would be great if you could put in your two senses to put it on, put it on, put it on. Now, if we could bring down the statistics on the deaths, we might be doing better. If you, if you watch Channel Four every night, if somebody gets hit even on a motorcycle or whatever, because a lot of those guys, they don't want to wear a helmet. It's no freedom. Um, if you can get them talked into it, either through whatever legislation you gotta do to get this going. Now Senator Carl Rhodes and Jenna just recently got another bill passed for skateboarders, but also that should include roller skaters and anybody that's on wheels.
Yes.
So if you can push that, push that, push that for TBI, I don't know if you know what TBI is, traumatic brain injuries, which they're dying on the fourth floor of Queens, where then they have a choice, give up your parts, you know? So it's very important to me that you folks might keep talking about bicycles and e-bikes and all that kind of stuff, but you're forgetting that the safety comes first with the apparatuses that you wear when you're riding the bikes. As a physical therapist, I didn't want to see any more TBI's.
Quite well taken.
Thank you.
Mahalo.
Anyone else, members? The question was. Yes, Sylvia, go ahead, please.
Okay. Now, I have a really bad impression of bicycle, bicycle riders. Because three weeks ago, I was on my way to physical therapy. I was a passenger in the car. And we were at a stoplight on New Uwano Avenue going ocean bound, Makai bound. And we were right by the Chinese temple and the apartment house and there were a line of cars waiting for the light to turn green so we could pass the parked cars and get into the right lane to make the right turn on School Street. A female bicyclist drove, rode her bicycle between the parked car and the moving lane. Now, is that legal?
Uh, I'm.
She squeezed herself between the parked car and the traffic lane.
It's not advisable. I agree with you. If there's not enough room there, she's risking her own life. So she wants everybody to obey the laws, to wear their helmets, to be safe, to be akamai on the roads.
She had her helmet on. She was wearing a helmet and she was in her bicycle outfit. She was wearing, anyway. But she scared the heck out of us and she, she had the nerve to yell at us, to tell us, you know, that she was coming through and there was, I swear to you, we were lucky that there were two feet between the parked car and the traffic lane. I don't think that's a safe thing for bicycles to be doing. And the car started to move because, and that's when she yelled at us. That's why I just, I've come across so many violations trying to be careful and yet and you talk about sharing the road, you know, driving with aloha and you get this kind of situation.
Amen.
Thank you, Member.
That's my, that's my problem because that wasn't the first incident of somebody doing that. And also they go against the red light.
Yes.
And the, the most famous spot is right by Fosse Municipal Building and Alapi and on King and Alapi, that intersection, always going across the red light. And it's been several occasions when I've seen that. Because I'm at the stoplight wanting to make a left turn and I see this bicyclist coming. They think they have to ride away through the red light. So I think.
Does not, they speak, does not advise that they do that.
I think the thing to do is we need to educate them that, you know, there are the rules. We got bicycle lanes and what are you supposed to be doing? You stop at the light, you know?
Thank you.
And not take advantage of the fact that, oh, I'm a bicycle, so I, I have more rights than the motor vehicle or, you know, even the pedestrians. Oh my God, there's so many violations. And I don't know why they, they're not getting ticketed. But that's my problem about driving around here. And then now there's the electric bikes. I didn't know that you had to be fifteen years old, at least fifteen years old to use that. And all of these fatalities and accidents have been minors. So I don't know. I don't know what the solution is, but I think it has a lot to do with education and getting them to train that you, just because we got bright lanes doesn't mean that you're right and you can do all of these things.
Thank you, Member Young, for your comment. Ms. Bender, do you have a reply or response?
We all do. At Hawaii Bicycling League, you cannot, we try all we can to reach out and educate our, our riders. But we can't reach everyone. And then there are those who feel like they know everything they need to know and they will never come to HBL for any kind of education. So we're trying to start young with the fourth graders and also my, my boss Travis Council, who's the executive director, is always at the legislature trying to get better legislation for education. I agree with you a hundred percent on that. I just think that, yeah, I agree with you fully. And, and as far as that young lady who was, or woman who was on that bike and who did that, she's taking her life in her own hands and she doesn't realize it. And, and there she is, though. She's a vulnerable user.
Quite well taken.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. I have one last question. Oh, sorry. Is there anyone else? No?
Uh, I'm sure you have my hand up.
Yes, Vice Chair, please go ahead.
So I'd like to offer the other side of the story here. I bike commute daily, three and a half miles from Punch Bowl to Restaurant Row. Most of that is on the divided bike lanes, so from Pensacola to King to South. And even though Sylvia makes it sound like all bicyclists are horrible, the number of bicyclists that I see properly wearing helmets, even e-bikers and people stopping when they should be, it's vast majority of bicyclists are obeying the law. The most dangerous things I see are particularly on the divided bike lanes are drivers who don't look both ways when they cross that lane of traffic. And you have to think about these divided bike lanes as lanes of traffic. So in the same way that you would look when you're crossing a lane of traffic with a car in it, you do the same thing with the bicyclists. The stop, the, the intersection of Alokeia and the King Street Bike Path. Well, right now, the King Street Bike Path at that area is closed, but when it's open, I have seen people run that red light on bicyclists. Again, and I agree with Sylvia that people, you know, there should be a ticket for cyclists who run the red lights. But again, there are cars that run red lights all the time in front of me and very frequently it's kind of dangerous. So goes both ways. I think the number of bad drivers out there are relatively small. I think the bad, number of bad bicyclists who are out there, it's relatively small. And to make.
I agree, Mike. I agree absolutely what you're saying. I'm not saying.
Sylvia, can I finish?
Okay.
And Paula, I agree with you a hundred percent that helmets should be required. Well, I don't know if we should have a helmet law, but anybody riding a bicyclist or bicycle or other device like that should be wearing a helmet. I've actually been on the ground several times. I've had two helmets broken, but my head has been fine. So yes to helmets.
Yeah.
And with that, I'll yield the floor.
Thank you. Member Young, you have any questions for, one last comment? No? Okay. Um, I will ask Ms. Bender one last thing before we close and that is, we agree with, as a driver, I agree that we should share the roads with others. Since I work for the Department of Transportation Services, yes, I agree. Since the, the trend now is to get everyone to use other modes of transportation to work and it's great that our Vice Chair bikes to work. However, do you have statistics on how many bicyclists continue to register their bikes with the state or city as well as obtaining bicycle insurance?
Well, I don't, I've never heard of bicycle insurance. Maybe Mike can assist with that, but we register all our bikes. However, it seems like, especially with all those chop shops that kind of rise up where there are parks and tents, it's, I don't, I don't even know how they can keep track. And you register your bike once and that's that, you know? I mean, I have my health insurance. I have my Medicare. So I'm covered, but and actually when I'm in an accident, I've been in three most recently, busted three helmets and kept my head intact and cracked ten ribs, both clavicles. But that is, that is an interesting statistic to question and I'm interested as well. So thank you, Ray.
Yeah, maybe, again, maybe education is the way to go, you know?
I think it is.
Register and protect themselves with insurance because since the drivers have to do it, we also feel that the bicyclist should do it too. Thank you.
Man, I can clarify. Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, Vice Chair.
Okay, I can clarify insurance. Generally speaking, your homeowners insurance covers your bicycle. And it's basically bicycles, even my road bike is, it's only about $6,000. So I mean, it's significantly less than any other, any $50,000 vehicle. So homeowners insurance has covered that as well as injuries incurred if the, if there's no other insurance company. That's all covered with normal insurance. I have actually never heard of bicycle insurance, so it's not really.
I guess, I guess I'm asking because, you know, again, if we had, if a motor hits a bicyclist, the motor ends up paying. I would think if they're at fault. So. I would think if they're at fault. So.
Yeah, um, I mean, if a bicyclist runs into a motorist, uh, chances are the motorist is not going to be physically injured. I don't think that's an issue. You know, maybe the car is going to get dented. Um, in which case, again, homeowners insurance is going to cover that.
Okay. With that being said, any last questions? If not, thank you, Ms. Bender for providing your presentation. And I'm sorry again that I did not, it wasn't available.
I have a quick question.
Um, I saw Ms. Santos first and then Mr. Smith.
Hi, aloha. Thank you, Paula, for this, uh, presentation. There's tons. I could say I've been an avid cyclist most of my life. Whether it was motorcycle, bicycle, skateboard, if it had wheels, I was on it. There's so much I could say to this subject, but to your most important point about education. I recently spent about three weeks in Oregon, walking along the Willamette River on the wonderful wide bike paths they have there, you know, that we don't have here. There were classes where they were teaching little kids on their bicycles, how to ride safely, how to come up behind a person and call out on your left and ring their little bell on their bicycle. Are, is, do we have anything like that going on where we're teaching the kids safety and etiquette on their bikes? Because the adults are lost already, the etiquette's gone.
We have, uh, Bike Ed and we go to, uh, both private and DOE schools for fourth graders. And we've been doing that for more than a decade now. And, um, it is, it is a joy. They, uh, we have BMX bikes for them. And even as the coaches, we ride the BMX bikes too. And, um, they have so much fun riding these bikes, but they're learning all these different things, how to brake, how much space to leave between each other. They're not allowed to ride without a helmet or covered shoes. And we even take them out on the road. And I'll tell you what, those kids are so excited to be on those bikes and they don't ask for a motor. They just want to be on that bike. It's so fun.
It's a free, it's a freedom that you can't beat is having the wind in your hair on your bicycle. Yeah. So I'm glad the kids are, are learning. I've just not seen it here. I saw it in Oregon and I was quite impressed. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Um, member Smith, I mean, yes, member Smith, you had a question?
No, I was just pointing out that before you moved on, Claire had a question. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for doing that. Once again, thank you, Ms. Bender, for your presentation. Oh, do we have one more person? No?
No, that's me giving you a shot.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good evening. Okay, item number B?
Um, Ray, I have my hand up, but anyway.
Go ahead, go ahead.
We used to, years ago, I remember more than ten years ago, bicycle safety was taught in the elementary school. Because it was taught in Pa'ou Elementary School, because I remember that, you know? And, um, so, you know, I understand what Paula is saying, you know, about the education and they're doing it at the fourth grade level, which I really believe that's a good thing to be doing. But it's the adults more than the kids that are doing all of these violations. So I'm, you know, I'm okay with it, but when you come across this five or six times in a month, you get really upset. So it's like, I don't know, I don't even want to drive anymore. But, but anyway, thanks.
Thank you for your comment. All right, item number B, we'll move on to the State Climate Change Mitigation and Adaptive Commission. We have a presentation on the Climate Action Pathways Report by Mr. Bill from CCMAC. He's going to make a presentation. Go ahead, please.
Hello, hi everyone. Yes, my name is, uh, Bill Unruh. I work for the, uh, State Climate Commission. And I actually know, uh, Mike Lum. Hey, Mike. Anyway, um, we go way back. But, um, yeah, so the clay, State Climate Commission was formed several years back, uh, two thousand seventeen. It was initiated because climate change impacts are affecting Hawaii more so than any other state. Uh, we've lost about a million and a half acres of native forest. Um, temperatures are increasing and, uh, sea levels are rising. They've already come up about ten inches and they're projected to go much, much higher, three to eight feet over the next fifty to one hundred years. And, um, it's going to affect our infrastructure. And you can already go outside like the Monkey Pod Hotel and, um, I mean, the Monkey Pod Restaurant Waikiki. And it's already hitting the, the wall right outside that hotel and restaurant. Uh, we see it flooding in, um, Apuna Puna at the intersection there. They're in keentides. And it's going to affect our infrastructure, the harbors, everything else. Um, also our oceans are more acidic from all of the emissions we're putting into the air. And, um, it's affecting our coral reefs, which will eventually keep dying. And, um, and the temperatures and the waters have increased. And, uh, we don't want to lose our coral reefs because that's our front line of defense for our beaches and save our, to, for erosion from our, on the island. So anyway, um, the Climate Commission was formed. It's made up of about twenty members across the state. All of the counties are also involved in this Climate Commission, as well as, as well as all state departments and Department of Hawaiian Home Lands even too. So, um, we meet on a, a quarterly basis and we're pushing forward and working on initiatives um, to make it, uh, more bearable and to adapt to climate change. And also to mitigate everything that we are doing that's affecting climate change, such, such as reducing our greenhouse gases. Uh, we're working on other initiatives such as replanting native forests and obviously bringing more renewable energies online. We need to lessen our emissions that are all a CO2 in the atmosphere. And, um, anyway, about the, the last year and a half, we've been working real diligently on the first ever Climate Action Pathways. It's a, uh, plan more or less to guide us in the future. And it's the first plan ever put together. So all of the counties have also put together a plan. Um, and I'll share my screen real quick, uh, and I can put these into the, um, the chat as well. Um, let's see, there we go. Hopefully you can see, see my screen there. We have this brochure here. I'll put some other stuff in the chat as soon as I'm done talking, um, about links to, um, our online system. But, um, anyways, we're working on making things more affordable, hopefully. And, um, a health and safe future for all of us. But that QR code there goes to a, uh, website. Um, we have an online platform that we put together for the first ever Climate Action Plan. We've attended about eighty events across the state. We had focus groups, consultants, uh, lawmakers input. And we developed this first draft plan and now it's open for public review.
Excuse me, Bill. Um, could you make the screen a little wider? I mean, the, the document wider because we see your chat and.
Okay, yeah, I got a lot of stuff going on. Sorry, how's that?
If you could make it a little bit larger, I think it'll be easier for us to see. We just see a quadrant.
Oh, really? I think I got it. It's the largest I can have on my screen.
Okay, can everybody see that? Yes. Okay, you can please continue. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Thanks for letting me know to do that. Yeah, I got a lot of stuff going on on my computer. Anyway, so, yeah, um, but we have a lot of things we're bringing online. So for instance, um, KIUC on Kauai, they have a co-op for their energy systems. They have been at about fifty-five percent renewable energies. Uh, producing their energy across the island there. So they're, they're a good role model for the rest of the state. And we're bringing more solar farms online throughout the state. And, um, but we have this Climate Action Plan that we want everybody to be sure to go online, check it out. There's an executive summary on there you can check out. Um, or you can do the entire, the executive summary is about twenty pages long. Or you can review the entire document. It's close to two hundred pages long. Um, but it's going to help guide us in the future and, and move us forward. But we definitely want the public input. So we've been attending neighborhood board meetings. We're having talk story sessions at, uh, um, libraries and, and we're holding other events across the island, uh, and islands as well, neighbor islands too. So I'll be going over to Kauai next week for several events. And, um, but just last Friday, we had a big event at, uh, Doris Duke Theater. And then, uh, two weeks ago, I was over in Connie O'Hay for an event. But, um, anyway, so yeah, check, check it out. Go to this, uh, QR code online. And I'll put some stuff in the, the chat there and just let us know if you guys have any, any more questions or anything like that. But I, I know I spoke pretty quick, but, um, you guys have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Uru for your report. Um, just for disclosure, I represent the Department of Agriculture on that Climate Change Commission. I've, I've been doing it several times, so just to let the members know. But thank you. Members, do you have any questions for Mr. Uru? And any questions about the Climate Action Pathways Report? I do have one question, Mr. Uru. When is the deadline for comments?
Thank you for that question. Excellent question. September thirtieth. Yep. We've had it open since, say, August first, so we've been attending so many different events. But, yeah, it closes September thirtieth. We'll probably keep it open for just a couple more days after that. But, um, yeah, so ours is open for two months period. I believe City and County was open and only opened for like three weeks for their feedback, but, uh, yeah. So definitely check it out, give us feedback.
Okay, members, do you have any questions for Mr. Uru on the, uh, Climate Action Report or his presentation? Please speak up and I, and you will be recognized. If not, he'll put that link in the chat so you can take a look at the report and provide your comments. Do we have anyone from the public here that would like to ask, um, Mr. Uru, any questions? Nope, I don't see any hands raised. Mr. Uru, thank you so much for your patience and waiting for your time to present. I know you have a message in the chat, so you can take a look at that. And we look forward to receiving the link and I hope you get a lot of comments. Thank you.
Thank you guys so much. Very much appreciated. Okay, aloha.
Aloha. Have a good evening. Okay, next on the agenda is item C, the Poly Highway Wood Street Crosswalk Update. Do we have someone here from the Department of Transportation Services? I'm sorry, Department of Transportation. Oh, and, um, Mr. Uru, I think you're still the main person on the screen, see. Like wanna, I don't know why. Okay, there we go. Thank you.
Let's speak.
Oh, thank you. Okay, is that someone from DOT?
Hi, good evening. Ryan Nakata with the State DOT on highways.
Hi, Mr. Nakata. Thank you so much for attending. We appreciate you being here.
Okay, so yeah, I wanted to give an update on a couple of the agenda items for Poly Highway. Uh, so first off, as first up, the, the Wood Street Crosswalk, uh, issue. Um, I wanted to give an update that our, our testing lab group that does, uh, that did the previous noise monitoring study. Um, they committed that they're going to do a second study in the month of October. And we know, we, when I discussed this, uh, with the board back, uh, it was in July, two months ago. Um, I know, uh, President Mr. Mark Oyama had concerns about the legitimacy of the data, about how it was collected, locations selected and such. So that was relayed to our, our testing lab group. And, um, the latest update that I have is that they're going to do another study. Just, and they're going to be working, uh, closely with Mr. Oyama. So if they haven't already contacted him, they will be reaching out soon. We're going to make sure that we're on the same page as far as where's proper adequate location measuring noise for comparison with, uh, regular highway levels versus, uh, the area closest to its residence and at the, at the race crosswalk, uh, at Wood Street. So we'll make sure we're on board and then go forward with the, the, the next, uh, second, uh, noise study from there. And also a second thing to add to this issue is that, um, we tried to, um, reduce the noise at the Wood Street Crosswalk by changing out the delineator types that's in the roadway. So we had, previously had those plastic tube type delineators, uh, right at the crosswalk at Wood Street. But we changed those out to, uh, a different type, which is a thinner plastic strip type of delineator. Uh, so we are hoping that will also help reduce the noise when those, um, delineators are struck by vehicles. So those are two points of, uh, information that I have for the Wood Street Crosswalk. And this is ongoing, so, uh, I'll continue to, uh, share information on what the results are for the study as, as those come out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, members, do you have any questions for Mr. Ryan on this subject? Please say something or raise your hand.
Uh, so this is, uh, the resident with the complaint, Mark Oyama, if I may speak.
Oh, um, hold on, Mr. Oyama. I see member Kurashige. We, we asked the board members to ask questions first and then you can ask after that. So Paula, go ahead, please. Paula, did you have a question? We can't hear you. Can y'all hear her? Because I can't hear her.
Uh, Paula needs to unmute herself.
Paula, please unmute. Oh, there she goes. Paula, you're still muted. While she's trying to figure that out, do we have any other board members that has any questions?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead, Paula.
Oh, what's going on? I know that it's, uh, on this one tonight is about the noise, et cetera, because I feel bad for the people living there that have to listen to that noise all night long. But my al, my also question for it, all the ADA people who try to catch the bus to go downtown, because we really don't have a bus on our side. Um, is that, uh, crosswalk from the middle of this, the poly across is at an angle, which is so stupid. Because you have to go to a curb and then walk through grass to go back to the bus stop. And I'm thinking that as far as an ADA person, even our seniors who don't walk so good, that, that crosswalk on that side is wrong. It's, it's going off at a, oh, almost fifteen degree angle. Not going to the bus stop, but going up the poly. So like the man said at one of the other meetings, he wants you to look up the poly and look at the cars coming down. I think that's scary. And they need to fix that immediately. So that the people that do have problems crossing can get across quicker and not have to go up a curb and then go onto grass that sometimes is knee high. Thank you.
Thank you, member Kurashige. Any other board members with any questions for Mr. Mr. Nakata? If not, I'm going to move to Mr. Oyama. Thank you for your patience. Now's your time to address Mr. Nakata.
Uh, yes, thank you. So I don't really have questions so much as, um, uh, I just wanted to say that I did just get to look at, I just, uh, got the, of the noise report, the previous one sent to me just a short while ago. So I had, I didn't have time to look at it fully, but I had enough time to briefly glance it over. And, uh, I, I did identify several uh, major errors that I kind of was, well, I wouldn't say I was expecting them, but I suspected they could be, have, could have been made. And I, I, I saw that they were indeed there when I looked at the report. So I guess, uh, maybe I shouldn't go into too much detail here. But I guess for, maybe I, I, I should at least mention, uh, the most important one of all to, uh, Mr. Nakata, which is that these sound meters that they're, that actually any of these sound meters, not just this particular company, but in general, there's a, uh, critical setting regarding, um, how they measure, in particular impulse noises or rumble strip noises. It's called, it's called, um, they call it, uh, the fast or slow response rate. And it was in fact set to the incorrect setting when the, all these tests were performed, which means that all the data that was gathered was in fact, uh, filtering out the rumble strip noise.
Okay, Mr. Nakata, do you have a response? Or, sorry?
Okay, understood. I hear, I hear what your concerns are. And, uh, again, our testing lab staff, uh, committed that they're going to be working with you before the next tech, testing is done. So, um, I'll, I'll relay this concern to them, but also when they before the next tech, testing is done. So um, I'll, I'll relay this concern to them, but also when they do reach out to you, please uh, ensure that your concerns about the sound, you know, sound meter settings are properly, properly set and uh,
Right, so I guess I'll just keep the other details. Oops, sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh yeah, so I guess I'll just keep the other details to, you know, uh, to myself for now, but yeah, that was the most major one and um, yeah, so thanks for that. I can sort of tell that, you know, you're trying to do a good job with the report when I look at it. But yeah, I think some errors are, you know, some things are not maybe done right. So uh, yeah, so I just, I guess thank you for coming here and still communicating with us.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Oyama.
Thank you both for communicating with each other.
Oh, sorry, there's one more thing I wanted to add. Um, also in regards, oh, of course, of course, there's some question about whether, you know, whether the data is actually accurate now, but even, even the previous test, the numbers that came back, um, it was slightly different than what had been reported. It was reported correctly, but there's like decimals and things. So there's actually a one decimal difference more than what was actually reported. So there was actually a three decimal difference between um, the, the strips outside my house and the speed hump right next to it. The close by one site, one in site two. So as reported, it's a two decimal difference, but when I looked at their actual report, it was actually two point seven decimals difference, which is actually quite a, quite a difference. I mean, a three decimals is kind of a cutoff point where you would naturally say there's, that there's a, there's a significant increase in sound. And so for there, for there to be a three decimal difference between two locations that are just right next to each other is actually quite a red flag in and of itself. So I wanted to add that also when I looked at the actual report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. El. And again, we'll confirm the next time when the details and their data is gathered from the second report that the reporting is, is accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you to you both. Um, anyone else from the public that has any questions for the DOT representative?
I do.
Oh, yes, I hear someone.
Can you hear me?
Barely. Please go ahead. You have the floor.
Hey, homie Motoyama. And I, I go to the SGI Church in the Hualoa area, so I was there when uh, they had an accident a couple of weeks ago. Um, but I, I was just wondering if there, there's going to be any kind of like um, uh, you know, um, those cameras for the speeding that they're taking pictures of now? And, and issuing them tickets? Uh, I was just wondering if um, that's in the plan in the future for that, because uh, they need to get some tickets going on there because uh, people are not listening. They're not gonna listen. You know, but I, I think once they find out, when they find out, oh, this is here, this camera is here to issue pictures, that's another alternative for them to um, not speed so much. That's my thinking of that.
Okay, I can share that. I'm not aware of any plans from Poly Highway. Um, I'll, I'll bring this back to the group that is managing our, our speed camera program. I know that this, the location they initially selected uh, was um, thoroughly vetted through, I'll go through the, through the legislature, state legislature to make sure that, you know, the laws were placed for those uh, initial locations were approved to go forward with the pilot, first the pilot and then actual enforcement. So I know there's a, there's a pretty long process in order to get these uh, speed cameras um, in place that actually will enforce enforcement. But um, so besides the ones on Vineyard and several on School Street, uh, I'm not aware of anything for the Poly, but let me take some of the group and I can.
Yeah, I think that would help.
I can check up for certain plans for Poly Highway.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Motoyama, and thank you, Mr. Nakata, again for attending um, our board meeting. With that, oh, yes, Paula, go ahead. One last question?
No, I wanted, thank you. For Paula.
Thank you. With that, thank you, Mr. Nakata, for attending our meeting tonight. Um, and please thank Mr. Sniffman for responding to my letter from the board asking for a Poly Highway representative, because the community is very concerned about speeding and noise and some of the projects and we do appreciate the good intent to mitigate all the accidents on the highway. Um, but thank you so much for attending and we look forward to seeing you at future meetings. And we hope that you and Mr. Motoyama can have a resolution to the issue of noise.
Uh, charging ma, mask, I, I spoke to item, I'm at agenda items uh, C, but there's also item P that speaks to Poly Highway ADA compliance.
Yes, please go ahead.
I want to just give a little update on that. And this um, this is something that, you know, looking back at past correspondence, this came up last year in 2024, where um, you know, the, the, the project uh, for the Poly Highway resurfacing, you know, we did a lot of the sidewalks, reconstructed sidewalks with um, also all the utility poles and other obstructions in the sidewalk. So when this concern came up about ADA clearance and if there's enough space for wheelchair users to pass, uh, the concern was taken to the project team uh, for them to look at and investigate. And I just want to report that um, that last, uh, I believe it was June or July of 2024, the project team did a physical inventory uh, check of all obstructions along the, along the sidewalks. Uh, and they looked at between country called Road and Jack Lane and actually took physical measurements of every street light pole, traffic signal pole box and provided measurements. So that is where the correspondence stopped, that we do have measurements, but the follow-up questions as far as, does that mean the project was CD compliant? Was it built correctly to the uh, design plans? Does any adjustments, improvements need to be made to make it ADA compliant? That was not answered. So that's where today that I put it out to the project team again to find out status on what happens with these um, clearance measurements that they obtained. Can they confirm that everything is compliant or will we need to do additional um, corrections and improvements? So that's, that's a pending item that I'm gonna have to uh, follow through with and then report back, we do get that information.
Thank you, Mr. Nakata. I will keep that on the agenda so that um, you know, you can, you can respond. And we have a question from Paula Kurashige who raised the issue. Go ahead, Paula.
I want to tell you that you've mentioned on the other side of the Poly, but what about the other side of the Poly?
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention.
Cause I've, I've seen one, two, three, four, five, six different places where they are not in compliance with ADA. And if you talk about uh, wheelchairs that are twenty-eight to thirty-two inches and you say that the, the sidewalk is thirty-two, there's still some places where that one wheelchair coming up, the person has to walk in grass or uh, there's not enough room for two people to pass. So I think there's a lot of things that need to be looked at with ADA, but you mentioned just the other side of Polly. As a physical therapist and working as an ADA person for Department of Health many years ago, um, there's a lot of things there that need to be improved, especially for wheelchairs and the blind. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kurashige. Um, Mr. Nakata, do you have a response or you can?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I want to clarify that. I, I misspoke. The survey does include both sides of the highway. The upside and the diamond side of Poly Highway, the sidewalks were, uh, I guess the structures were measured on both sides.
Thank you for your response.
And what does that mean?
I assume he's saying that he's gonna be checking up on both sides with the project team that did that project in 2024 and report back to us next month.
I hope to God that's true. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that's for the members. Do we have anyone from the public asking Mr. Nakata any questions? If not, thank you again, Mr. Nakata. We really do appreciate your attendance and please again relay that to your director as well. Have a good evening.
Excuse me.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Ellis from the public?
Yes, I do.
Oh, okay.
I have a question for Mr. Nakata. I think what we're trying to do here is, is find out if the six locations are in compliant or not compliant. And if they're not, what is the, the process that we get so it is compliant? That it has the necessary uh, uh, width so that people can maneuver safely? So we're going back and forth, not knowing or having some kind of result as a result of 2024 and pretty soon it's gonna be 2026. And so for nearly two years, we've been waiting for some answers or correction, uh, which would involve perhaps movement of some of the utility poles or removing the, the obstructions that's causing the problem. And we have, we have a safety issue here also. Not to mention that there are other issues on the um, on Poly Highway with regards to the frontage of a, of a driveway, such as the problem that we've had at twenty-nine sixty Poly Highway. When a car is parked in the driveway and it encroaches onto the sidewalk, preventing a wheelchair its access according to ADA. So, so there has to be some kind of education that perhaps the Department of Transportation would look at and, you know, identify where the problem is and come up with a solution. Otherwise, we're going to just go back and forth, back and forth for another two years.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis, for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, understood. Again, we'll take this back to our group and, and get a solution on, first of all, determining if there's ADA compliance and then secondly, if it's not, then what is the, what is the proposed solution to make it compliant? And then I'll make a note of the concern about the driveway at, is that twenty-nine sixty, two nine six zero, Poly Highway? With the, the cars uh, blocking the sidewalk?
I think it is, yes.
Okay.
Thank you again. Okay, is that someone else? Someone from the public? No? Okay, thank you again, Mr. Nakata. We do appreciate it. We look forward to seeing you next month. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have item number E. Do we have anyone here from the Uwana Valley Park Security Lights Request and Howl Tree Trimming? It's a recurring item on our agenda. I did not write a letter or request anyone from DPR, Department of Parks and Rec or the neighboring Queen Emma Summer Palace, but.
I have some concerns, if I may.
Sure. Oh, uh, before we.
I'll let you approach the board.
Yeah, sorry, I have to approach the board. Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Board members, do you have any concerns? I know Paula, Paula popped up, but uh, no? Okay.
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, Paula.
Yes, um, Mr. Ellis had brought this forward before and I believe there was eleven different items that he brought up over a period of one, one period of time, but it went on for a few meetings. And the ones that we, we got settled were perfectly good. But then we've had another three items added on since that time and including, like I mentioned before, with community policing as to volunteers.
Okay, so this agenda item.
Mr. Ellis, Mr. Ellis does have.
This agenda item includes security lights and how tree, how tree trimming only. Sorry, we can add other items later on the agenda. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Do you have any issues relating to those two? If not, then we will defer to Mr. Ellis.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ellis, go ahead, please.
Thank you. The concern that we had with the lights, I think they solve some of it. But there's still a problem where the lights that are in use, they have an orange um, reflection. And those lights aren't really good for security at all. I think they need to have a brighter light, like a regular light bulb, you know, or cool white or whatever it is, rather than the orange lights and that's on the pathways. Uh, when the lights go off, I mean, it gets quite dark in the park and they go off and sometimes they're not corrected as far as the timer is concerned. That's located in the um, the maintenance uh, closet of the bathroom or the restroom building there. That need to really be adjusted, so that is part of the security of the lights is changing the bulb or changing the brightness of the uh, of the light itself, uh, where the walkways are. The major concern that I had was that fact that uh, the lights to the parking lot were not working for a long time. And so they finally got that corrected, but I noticed that the canopy of the um, the monkey pod trees that cover the parking lot area uh, blocks the light from coming through so that it would be safe. And I would like to perhaps have the Department of Parks and Recreation and their tree trimming division to, to look at that while they're looking at the other problem that we have with regards to the howl tree, that they should trim off the canopy so that the lights could shine directly onto the parking lot. So I'm going to note in that and then you could follow up with the, with the respective departments, if you would. The second item that I have on there is the howl tree. Uh, the howl tree's been there forever. I mean, you know, fifty, sixty years. And it's always been trimmed previously. I remember when growing up that we were able to continue to play in the stream and, and be under the howl tree. And since then, it seems like the Department of Parks and Recreation and the tree trimming branches is passing off the responsibility to the daughters of Hawaii. Daughters of Hawaii are saying, no, that's, that's, that's the thing, you know, we'll take care of what was in our, the problem is that there are many homeless or, or drug deals that go on inside or under the howl tree. Uh, when we called the howl tree, you know, I, I was thinking that it should be like the how terrace at the Holly Colony Hotel where it's above ground, you know, like a regular tree. This one's just crawling on the, on the grass. And it just needs to be trimmed, trimmed up, off of the grass so that you can see what's going on in that, that bushy howl bush or the tree itself. And uh, but no one wants to take the responsibility, responsibility. Uh, it could be, you know, if you measured out the uh, the uh, the, through a survey of what is the responsibility of the howl tree? Is it on inside of the property of, of the uh, daughters of Hawaii? Or if it's not, then it's gotta be the, the um, the Department of Parks and Recreation. No one has taken, looked further into it. Years ago, they did. It's all know it. The, the daughters of Hawaii will take responsibility because they want to use that to, to uh, to act as a buffer between the Guineama Summer Palace and, and the, the park. And the, so I, I think, I think safety is more of a concern there rather than using it as a buffer and as a place where there is uh, illegal activities going on. So I would like this to remain on the, on the, on the agenda so that we can get down to the, the problems that we have there. Uh, so that's the problem on the, on the howl tree and, and the parking lights in the parking lot.
Mr. Ellis, thank you for the details. Now we got a better idea of what the issues are. Um, if we fail to mention this to the mayor's representative, will you be, if you are in attendance, would you mind also raising that with um, Director Hashiro? She's, she's really good at following up with city agencies especially.
Well, I didn't want to speak out of turn because it was on an agenda item.
Yeah, okay, then I'll try to remember to mention that as well.
Thank you.
You, thank you so much. Okay, anyone else has any other questions on this issue? If not, I'm gonna move on to item F.
Can I, can I say something?
Sure, you can say something. Go ahead. We have.
The other, the other thing that needs to be looked at now, and I know Mike and I am disgusted, but is now there's um, from the cats, we're getting fleas.
Okay, that's not on the, that's not on the agenda, so we're gonna have to put that on the agenda for discussion. Remind me to put that on the agenda regarding the fleas. Sorry.
People are getting bitten, so.
Sorry, yeah, that can, now, that can be.
We gotta wait another month.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Oh, dear.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so moving on to item F, we already spoke about that with the mayor's report. Item G is um deferred to next month. Because of the notice to the neighbors. Item H is Punch Bowl Sesspool's project. Mr. Lum, Vice Chair Lum, do you have any report on this?
Uh, so this is basically this this cesspools that um. There's a section of houses on Po'awhaina which are still on cesspool. Um, there's a project on the books with the. Whoever's responsible for sewers, that they're gonna put it up here, but. No progress and it's basically moving on glacial scale, so I don't know if there's ever gonna be much updates with this, so. We can, in memory of Phil Nierney and his Polly Lights, you know, maybe leave it on here uh with. The assumption that there's not really gonna be many updates over um, over the next probably few years.
So it's, it's on the board, it's on the agenda for the Department of, I mean, I'm sorry, you're saying that. Environmental Services, the department has on their capital improvement projects list.
Correct. Um, but yeah, it's the. There's a long story behind it, which I don't really, I can go into, but uh, yeah, we can just leave it on the agenda and maybe.
Okay.
Under the hope that something will happen.
Sounds good. We will leave this on the agenda and um. Any other members, any comments? If not, anyone from the public have any comments?
I I have a question, and that is, I I don't want to belabor the point, but uh, since, you know, you said we were gonna. You don't know, but I just wondered, is this kind of one of those things sort of like the sprinklers and some of the apartments where just the expenses? Too big and the the government, whichever it is, the state or the city. Just uh is is reluctant to force people to remediate their current situation.
So what do you think, Mike? The issue is um. Oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, so that there's about twenty houses which have cesspools. Um, we are under a requirement. By two thousand fifty to get rid of all cesspools uh in at least urban Honolulu, if not across the island. Um, so the money is there. There's actually Carol Fukunaga, when she was our um city councilperson. Uh, got the money allocated. I think it was the twenty twenty one budget. Um, so the money is in the capital group and budget to hook us up. It's just that there are. Thousands of cesspools, I think, on Wahoo and there are, they've probably, the. Um, there's a prioritization, so the cesspools on Po'awhaina are second priority. So until. The more made, the higher priority ones are taken care of, it's gonna be farther down the list. So I guess to answer your question, money's actually not an issue because it's been allocated.
Well, if I could follow up, Chair, and so if I'm hearing you correctly, then the city is gonna pay for this? Then then what's the holdup? It it's because of the actual manpower to do the project? Is that the? The holdup?
I can't say definitively. Uh, sorry, again, responding here, I can't say definitively. But uh, I believe it is basically the large list of projects that they're doing and that this one is lower priority.
Thank you.
Just to comment, it sounded like if Senator Fukunaga appropriated the funds from the legislature, then it's the state money that probably needs to be transferred to the city. But.
Well, well, I assume she did when she was a, uh, she was our council.
Sorry, clarification. Thank you. Okay, we'll leave that on the agenda and um. Hopefully there'll be an update in the future. Um, oh, this is in person. Why did I put this? In-person board meeting. Date and, oh yeah, sorry. Um, this is the item where, agenda item where we wanted to have a. In-person board meeting. Do we have any um comments or motion to? Has anyone thought about this, members? And if you have, then did you want to propose anything? If not, I'm just gonna leave it on the agenda until. Someone comes up with a suggestion, because it was raised that the group wanted to get together in person. None? Yes.
So if if that's the case, that would be good news. I mean, I. I I always advocated if we could get together at least once during our term. I know most, uh, there are a lot of um. Folks on the board that that like the current, uh, well, it is a hybrid, but I mean, like to to. To attend the meetings remotely, but it it would just be great if we could come together. You know, actually just get a picture taken, you know, to kind of make our introductions, because we have had some new board members and uh. I I would just strongly advocate it and we'll tell you the process. Um, usually you can ask the NCO and. I don't know that they want to actually do the work of scouting out of place, but they will be very helpful. Like for instance, we always met uh elementary, so they will reach out and they do all that legwork. You just have to tell them. So um, yeah, I would hope that the other members of the board would be on board to do this for at least a meeting. That's just my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Smith. Does any other board members have any comments or um statements about doing this? If not, I can leave it on the agenda for further. Thought process and someone can bring up a month, suggest a month at the next meeting. And since there's no verbal response, I think I'll do that. Thank you. All right, we are down to the last uh nine thirty six and we want to keep our neighborhood assistance with us, so. Let's move on to item number ten, board business. This is um. Representatives Takanouchi's invitation to participate in the Community Resource Fair on October twenty first, and it's coming up next month, so. I'm gonna ask anyone if they want to make a motion, and if not, then I will take that as a silent no. Um, that we won't be participating. So do we have any motions to discuss or to say yes or to? Partake in this um Community Resource Fair, and if not, I will understand.
Madam Chair, you have uh two people who wish wish to comment on the time.
Thank you, uh Vice Chair. I see um. The representative from Representative Takanouchi's office.
Uh, just a clarification, it's on the uh eighteenth, uh, I think.
Oh, sorry, sure.
That's all I had to say. Thank you.
October eighteen. Thank you. And who is the other person that wanted to comment?
Uh, that's me, Rachel.
Oh, hi, Rachel. Go ahead.
Hi. Um, I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware that funds this event is open for the public. Um, you don't have to. Do a poll on it, but if you wanted to like attend, that's fine. Um, I'll see if they're gonna do a motion, but it's it's free for anybody to join you.
Oh, okay. It's it's also, um, Rachel, it's about uh having a booth there, so. I wanted to put it on the agenda to see if anybody wanted to participate, because. Yeah, we need volunteers. Yeah, thank you. Okay, members, any volunteers going once, going twice? Okay, I will take that as a.
Well, I I.
Oh, sorry.
I would volunteer. I would volunteer. I understand it's, i-if we uh need it. Yeah, I could do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I I would also volunteer.
And that that's Vice Chair?
No, it's uh.
I'm so sorry. Who is that? Mr. Li, Mr. Lee? Member Lee.
Colonna Lee, correct.
Hi, member Lee, sorry about that. Great. Okay, and I'll probably be there too, so it'll be the three of us.
So uh, just to clarify, I I guess it would be a matter of just reaching out. To Jenna's office and and getting the details as far as what we need, you know, like a. So we can talk about that outside the meeting. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so. Uh, the, the person from Representative Takanouchi's office, just to let you know, we will be participating and um.
Hello?
Please let us, please let us know what items we need, what we need to do to participate and then, okay. Let's give, wait, Paula, let's give him a chance to respond.
Can I tell you? I think Jill might be interested.
Oh, that's right. Thank you. Thank you, Paula.
Not here tonight.
That's right. Jill is at a, um, she's away from the island, so.
Yes, she's been doing that for a while.
Okay. Whatever. Paula, thanks for the reminder.
Yeah.
Cap, uh, sorry, Kelton. Kelton, the board will be participating. Thank you.
Awesome. I'll I'll pass that along to Rep. Takanouchi and I'll make sure to get you guys some additional details.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Great. Um, thank you, members, for participating in that. We look forward to doing that. Um, and on number eleven, we have announcements. Uh, let's see, don't forget, did anyone forget to do the um. New members requirements like the sunshine law contact form oath of office? Has everyone done that? If you haven't, be sure, oh, yes, sorry.
Um, I honestly don't remember whether I've done it or not. Is there, I can check.
Yes, Mike, I think you should notify Rachel or Brendan. Give them a call.
I may have done it. I mean, these things take like ten minutes, so it's like. Yeah, I can't remember whether I've done it or not, so Rachel, if if you could, let me know.
Yeah, so we'll review our files and then we'll send emails to people that um who don't have any documents on.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Great. Okay, and then let me know if I need to keep it on the agenda for next month. Thank you. So our next regular board meeting will be October twenty first at seven P M. Thank you so much for attending tonight. I really do appreciate. And the community does appreciate all your help and volunteerism. And uh, that's it. Let's adjourn. Thank you again. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you and good luck, new assistant.